I am, I'm doing all my thumbs up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He asked for a thumbs up.
Yeah, Sarah, we're ready to go, so let's go live.
Awesome.
There we go.
Thank you. All right. I call to order the Cumberland Town Council meeting of Monday, April 24th, 2023. The council met in workshop at 5:00 prior to the meeting to continue our budget discussions. First order of business is approval of minutes from April 10th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor? Wonderful. Next is manager's report. Before I hand it over to the manager, because it is really important and I just want to kind of say it at the top of the hour instead of at the end under new business, is just a reminder that on May 2nd, right here in the council chambers, we will be having a new resident orientation from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is really for new residents that have moved here within the last five years with COVID and everything. I think we had it for the first time last year and it was wonderful. All the booths set up around, you can talk to folks, learn about different services, also sign up for communication and just really get to know the staff here in town and ask questions. So again, if you are a new resident in the last five years, cordially and personally invite you to May 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 in the council chambers. With that, I will hand it over to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to turn over the first half of this report to Chief Rumsey, so Chief, you take it away.
Thank you, sir, councilors. Good to see you again. Exciting to be with you tonight for three separate quick items of business. First thing I'd like to do is ask Sergeant Scott Hendy to come on up, and Scott, if you would stand right here in front of the podium for me. I think folks may be aware of this, but tonight we're recognizing Sergeant Hendy for an action that he took at work on April 6th, which I think you could really only describe as heroic. So I think if any of you haven't heard the story, I have a letter and a certificate that I'm going to award to Scott tonight. Later on, we'll have a ribbon for him to put on his uniform that you have to special order. We don't keep them on hand, but tonight I have the letter that I want to read to give Scott this meritorious service award. So without further ado, the meritorious service award is awarded to an individual department member for a highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with some degree of hazard to the life of the member, the unit, or another person. It's my honor and pleasure to recognize you with this meritorious service award for actions taken on April 6th, 2023 to rescue a motorist whose vehicle had crashed on Route 1 near Powell Road. On April 6th, at approximately 6:47 p.m., you were dispatched to Route 1 for a vehicle crash. Dispatch provided information to you that the vehicle's accelerator was stuck, that grass around the vehicle was catching fire, and that the vehicle was still occupied. You arrived on scene less than three minutes later. As you arrived, you could see smoke billowing from the crash site. You exited your cruiser and grabbed a fire extinguisher before running to the single vehicle, which was off the road in a ditch. You could clearly see that grass and brush behind and beneath the vehicle was on fire. The windows of the vehicle were already obscured by smoke. You attempted to open the driver's door but were unable because it was locked. You immediately deployed your baton and used it to break out the driver's side window. This allowed you to see a woman inside the vehicle, either unconscious or semi-conscious. As you began calling out to her to rouse her, you deployed your fire extinguisher to beat back the flames that were growing at your feet. The rising smoke, flames, and chemicals from the fire extinguisher made it hard to breathe and hard to determine how to unlock and open the door of the damaged vehicle. The driver was not able to assist you. Next, you deployed your knife and cut the woman's seatbelt before briefly attempting to lift her out of the window. Unfortunately, the height of the vehicle and the shape of the window made this impossible. Realizing the extreme danger the motorist was in and that time was running out, you were able to briefly stop, look into the interior of the smoke-filled vehicle, and find the button to unlock the door. Once able to open the door, you reached in and extracted the driver by pulling her out away from the vehicle and up the hill to the road. As you pulled her out, your body camera clearly showed that flames were breaking through the floor of the vehicle by the driver's feet. As fire and EMS units arrived on scene, they took over care of the driver. Still concerned about the rising flames underneath the vehicle, you went back and fully discharged your extinguisher before making your way to the road, where you began to feel the effects of the smoke and fire extinguisher chemicals on your lungs. Luckily, you were able to be treated by EMS on scene and did not require hospitalization. It is clear to me that without your swift, decisive, and efficient action, the motorist would have been seriously injured by the growing fire, or worse. This was a difficult and demanding scene. The actions I've just described unfolded in two minutes, and your efforts in those two minutes surely made a tremendous difference to a human life. These actions make you eligible for our department's meritorious service award, which I am pleased to present to you tonight. I'm proud of you, your team members are proud of you, and I know the community is proud of you as well. We are lucky to have you watching over the town of Cumberland. Congratulations.
So, everybody knows, I might know a few people around this community, having lived here all my life. Scott, the human that you saved was a friend of my wife's and I. And tonight, she's here in the audience. She came in, she wanted to come in, say a couple of words to you, and she wants to personally thank you. Naina, if you want to step up. Naina, do you want to go to the microphone, maybe?
Just make it a little rough.
You all want to hear.
Enough pressure, come on. I obviously didn't realize what had happened. I never regained consciousness until I got into the ambulance, and at that time, they were asked, you know, "Where are you?" And I'm like, "Oh, I don't know where I am." And I cannot thank you enough, Scott, for what you did, not only saving my life, but also risking your life at the same time. I mean, I cannot even express, words cannot even say how much I appreciate what you did for me. I also, I'm not quite sure, Scott, if you know who I am, and that my son Ryan and you went to high school together. So, you know, thank you from him as well. And just one little bit of trivia about Scott that I would like to share, I don't know if everyone knows this or not, but Scott used to be, during the summer months of his high school, used to be meter maid in Freeport. Did we know that? And how they harassed you all the time about it. So I just, you know, like I said, I cannot thank you enough, Scott. You know, I don't know what else to say, just thank you, thank you, thank you. And that Cumberland is very fortunate to have you as one of their patrol officers.
I might only have a few meetings left in this role, but these are those moments that I am going to miss terribly.
All right. Next, what I'd like to do is swear in our newest patrol officer, so I'd like to ask Officer Kaitlin Sawyer. Kaitlin, would you come up and stand just in front of the podium for me?
Sure. Let me get my partner set up.
Okay.
See you.
Good boy. So as Otto settles down, just a little bit of background about filling this particular position. Some of you may remember, but after Sergeant Burgess retired, we had an open position for a very long time. We just weren't able to fill it. We were not getting well-qualified applicants, the position stayed open for many months. Bill and I started talking and I had this idea that I thought was brilliant at the time, that maybe we could recruit an officer to come here and get someone to come to start or bring a K-9 program to the town of Cumberland. As we were starting to mature those conversations, Tony Clukey, who was getting ready to retire from the town of Kennebunk, came in and put an application in with us. Absolute no-brainer, easy hire, he's already getting rave reviews from the community, as I think you may have heard a little bit about this evening. So we hired Tony and that actually filled our department back up to full staff. Shortly thereafter, we learned that we would have another full-time opening due to one of our employees planning to switch to reserve status in order to attend to some family priorities. We started grappling with how we were going to fill that position, and then I was approached by Officer Sawyer with interest in coming to the town of Cumberland. So some reasons why I was very excited that we were able to talk with Officer Sawyer about coming to Cumberland. Kaitlin is an eight-year veteran of law enforcement from the town of Kennebunk. I'm excited about the fact that she came to talk to us because our profession is overpopulated by white males. And so the fact that anybody that's very well-qualified, very well-respected, very well-prepared to assume this role, that's something other than a white man, excited me. That was thrilling. Kaitlin is very, very engaged in mental health initiatives, and I think she's going to speak to us a little bit about that in a few minutes, including helping to lead the York County's peer support team and being involved in crisis intervention work in the community. She and Otto are a very well-respected K-9 team. And a quick story about that, Kaitlin's first day at work was the 17th, so a week ago. On the 18th, while still in field training status, you may have heard about an incident that occurred out on Interstate 295 that started in Bowden and ended less than a mile short of our town line. We immediately all left the station and deployed to Yarmouth to offer them whatever support we could possibly offer. So myself, Captain LaChance, Detective Burns, Officer Schofield, Animal Control Officer Bobby Silkott, and Kaitlin were all there, manning positions on the perimeter, running errands, doing what we could do to try to help. Once they got the scene secured out on the interstate, they needed a K-9 team to go and do article searches out on the interstate to make sure that they weren't missing any important evidence to this criminal investigation that I don't keep track, but I feel very comfortable saying probably the largest criminal investigation in our state in the last 10 years, if not very close to it. And so when it got time for them to start to find a K-9 team, the command post was being run by the chief of the Yarmouth Police and a corporal with the state police, and I was standing nearby, and they said, "We have a K-9 team with Cumberland, ready to deploy out to the interstate when you need us." And one of the state troopers who's on the tactical team, who also runs a K-9, said, "Is that Officer Sawyer?" And the reason that struck me was because that trooper knew Kaitlin Sawyer, knew the capabilities of Kaitlin and her K-9, knew that when Kaitlin got out to the interstate, she was going to be able to provide real substantive and talented support to the investigation, which she did. It's very important to us when we hire at the Cumberland Police Department that we hire community-minded individuals. There was no question that we could not, that we could bring a K-9 team to Cumberland if both the officer and the dog were not community-minded officers. We know that Kaitlin has a personality and a drive to engage with the community that are going to make her an asset and a great fit with CPD, and she immediately felt right at home. And this is a pretty small town, great story. She was really impressed with our work around mental health and wellness of the community and our first responders. Kaitlin went to the academy with Captain LaChance, and Detective Burns and Officer Descanio. So we hired Ben Burns here in 2016, shortly before I started here. A few years later, he recruited Jake LaChance to come to Cumberland. A little while after that, Jake recruited Nick Descanio to come to Cumberland. And Kaitlin knew these three officers, she's very close friends with Amy Owen, went to high school with Tony Ridge, what else? Who else do we know? Oh, Tony Clukey had just come here from Kennebunk, you know, a few months before. So certainly seemed like a very, very good fit for Kaitlin to come and join the team. I think you can tell by the number of people that are here to see Officer Sawyer swearing in, that she has an awful lot of support from CPD, from her family, and from her law enforcement colleagues, two of whom made the trip all the way from Kennebunk to see her be sworn in with us tonight, which I can tell you, having done a lot of swearings in and having hired a lot of cops over the past 16, 17 years as an administrator, this does not happen. So, pretty amazing. For all these reasons and more, we are very excited to welcome Kaitlin to the Cumberland Police Department team. So I would ask Town Clerk Jen Doten to come up and administer Kaitlin's oath of office. And I'm going to pass this over to you because you have a speaking part now.
She does. I wasn't getting her a speaking part.
You didn't know about that either?
I didn't either. You're good.
We're going to make it work.
We are.
Otto wants to sit with you, though.
Of course he can. Do you want me to swear you in too?
He says he's just dying for somebody to play with him.
I hear you. I'm going to read this and you can engrave those two separate parts.
Okay.
And hopefully he'll just maintain.
He should.
Right? Can you raise your right hand? Do you, Kaitlin Sawyer, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof?
I do.
And do you swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as K-9 officer for the Cumberland Police Department, according to the Constitution and laws of the state?
I do.
Congratulations and welcome. Thank you. You're welcome.
For the last bit of the swearing in, we need to pin Kaitlin's badge on, and Kaitlin asked if it would be all right if Sergeant Juliet Angess from the Kennebunk Police Department, a good friend and former supervisor, would pin on her badge. So Sarge, come on up.
Is this a good angle?
I'll ask Whitney. I'll ask Whitney. And then lastly, this seems like a good time to talk about the benefits of a canine program to the police department and the community. Slideshow, beginning. So, what's a canine program all about? For those of you that may not have worked with a canine team before, I know I haven't, so I've been educating myself over the past couple of months. The number one thing I'll say about this canine team and this police department that I think is going to be pretty immediately recognized and appreciated is community policing. If Otto and Kaitlyn, together as a team, were not people you wanted to be around, other people in the community, kids at neighborhood events, the schools at Twinbrook during parades, it just wouldn't work. If Otto was a dog that could do nothing but bark and wanted to be biting people always here in the council chambers, it just wouldn't work. But we have a team that's capable of engaging in community policing and interested in engaging in community policing at every opportunity. And we'll make sure that we capitalize on those opportunities. And I think many of you understand that dogs can make connections with people and make them feel comfortable and make them feel excited and make them talkative and make them cooperative that sometimes humans just can't. So I don't think the community policing potential in this program can really be overstated. Some other benefits of a canine program. Otto is trained to track individuals. For me, sort of important, in order of importance, generally speaking, would be seniors. And Kaitlyn can talk a little bit about that when she comes up in just a minute. Lost children, anybody of any age that may wander. And then lastly, criminal suspects. Otto's trained and Kaitlyn, the team is trained to do evidence and drug searches. We saw, again, they participated in one of the largest criminal investigations in the state over the last decade, last week, searching for evidence. Thirdly, officer safety and suspect compliance. When Kaitlyn's out on the road with Otto and he is in his cruiser, and his cruiser is properly outfitted, which we're working on and will be, if she gets into a situation where she needs immediate backup, she can hit a button on her belt and the dog comes out to help. And he is a force multiplier, without question. Most people, when they know there's a dog in the back of the car or a dog on scene, immediately comply and do what they're told. In cases where we may be searching for a person who is dangerous, potentially armed, the dog is able to go and do searches without us exposing a human police officer to danger. And lastly, I'll say recruitment and retention. This may be hard to appreciate if you haven't spent a lot of time in law enforcement, but police departments that have a canine team are viewed as being professional police departments, are viewed as being desirable police departments to go and work at. And I know that officers who work with canine teams enjoy the environment of knowing that that resource is available to them for deployment. And certainly, we have a team here that I think that is definitely going to hold true for. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the benefits, but I know we wanted to talk budget because some questions had come up a few finance committee meetings ago. So, one of the things we were trying to be cognizant of when we put our budget proposal together for this year was that we have not done this before. So we don't know sort of what we don't know. We went and we talked to departments, a number of other departments that have canine teams. Captain LaChance did this research for me. And big picture, I'll tell you, there's a department very close to us that has multiple dogs. They just budget $10,000 per dog for every category of expense. There's other departments that budget quite a bit less than that. We landed on eight as sort of a middle ground, kind of until we could learn exactly what this is going to look like and then throttle back if necessary. But I've put together what I think is a fairly comprehensive and hopefully fairly accurate list of what we should expect for expenses. And they come down to tracking and training software. That is an online database that Kaitlyn enters in every time Otto does a track. And anytime Otto does training, it maintains that for her over the years. Food, dog food, dog meds, vitamins, about $1,200 a year. Health insurance. Health insurance covers Otto if he's injured in the line of duty. We pay a $1,000 deductible, which is factored into that amount that you see under Vet. And then expenses to treat the dog would be covered under, at like 90%. And Kaitlyn can tell you how that has worked to save the town of Kennebunk a ton of money in the past when he was exposed to fentanyl on a call and went into medical crisis and had to receive emergency medical treatment. So Vet, $2,000, that's a thousand deductible in case there's an emergency and the other thousand is preventative care shots and annual visit. Brushes, leashes, collars, toys, bowls, et cetera. Kenneling fees, as the owners of Otto and the employer of Kaitlyn, if Kaitlyn goes on vacation, we pay to kennel the dog. A subscription for a program that will sound alarm if Otto is in his cruiser and suddenly the air condition fails and the temperature is creeping up to a level that would cause danger to him and his health, sends an alarm to Kaitlyn's phone so that she knows she needs to get him out of there. And then Kaitlyn, by nature of the work that she does, has some additional needs for boots and outdoor clothing and things that may wear out faster or maybe a little bit different than the average patrol officer. And those costs all added together are about $6,400. So I think we came pretty close. Little, you know, we asked for a little bit more. Total of eight in the budget, again, not knowing what we don't know. I think we got fairly close based on the fact that this is a brand-new program. So I know that you may have questions and Kaitlyn may be the one that is best situated to answer some of them. So before you fire any questions at us that you might have, I was just hoping that Kaitlyn would be comfortable coming up and talking to you for just a couple of minutes about some of her experiences as a canine handler, some of the connections that she's made, some of the work she's done, and then some of the amazing work that she's done around officer wellness and in the mental health environment. So, Kaitlyn, are you comfortable doing that?
Yes, I am chief, yes. Thanks. Hi, thank you so much for having me. I just wanted to say it's an honor to start my career here at Cumberland. I'm excited to get to know everybody with my four-legged partner, who is just dying to play right now, so sorry if he's distracting. So to introduce Otto, Otto is a five-and-a-half-year-old purebred German Shepherd from Croatia. He comes from a long lineage of actually police dogs from Croatia. He was, we were paired together in 2019 through the state police canine unit. It was kind of a no-brainer. We wanted a big goofball that could do it all. And we literally got a goofball that can do it all. And he really equates, he knows when there are certain training aspects with me where we've been paired together since 2019, he knows this is playtime. This is why he's working the room like he's at a party. Because it's all about Otto at the end of the day and he knows it. And he's handsome and he's aware of that as well. But we've actually, despite his goofy demeanor, he's, we've had a ton of success working with, not only with the main drug agents this year at the Kennebunk and York County level, but also with, at a federal level as well. We were just starting to do projects called Community Safe Streets, which we work with drug agents out of Boston. And they come up, this particular case, we've worked Sanford and we just basically did a rapid-fire, four hours of just doing drug detection. And we seized a lot of drugs that potentially could have harmed and hurt hundreds of people with those drug seizures during that time. So drug work, he loves the work and he does it all just for his ball. That's all he wants to do. He's not food motivated like a lot of the labs in the canine unit. He just wants to play. For tracking, Chief Ramsey did mention it already, but one of our first successful tracks, this one was near and dear to my heart because we found him. His name was Bert. He was 80 years old, he had Alzheimer's. And he went for a walk and we couldn't find him. And he lived on 80 Acres in Arundel. And York County Sheriff's Office called us. See? Yeah, that's right. Look professional here. Make me look good. Down. And so we ended up getting the call and I ended up doing a track. It was a short track, but we ended up finding Bert. I think in under five minutes, Otto picked up the scent and I can read him just by his body language, he just took off. Bert had no idea where he was. He was also was in no distress. But he was covered in ticks and he had mobility issues as well. And so essentially, we don't really view it that way, but that was like weeks of training and just long hours of patience paying off. And we essentially saved someone's life that day. But sad part of the story is that unfortunately Bert passed away recently and his widow actually called me because someone had taken a picture of Bert and I after we found him. And she just said, you know, I've been looking for your name. And she just said, I just loved that day when you found him because Bert loved dogs. And so this is the reason why we do this work and we put in the patience and the hours, despite Otto being a complete goofball, is that he might present himself as a goof, but he is capable of saving a life. And it's been hugely impactful at a community level as well, just having him as my partner. So, I think I covered that part of it. Anything else I missed?
Do you want to just briefly touch on the mental health aspects of your work, which I know has been so important to you?
Yes. So another thing, an unexpected part of something that Otto does as well is that I'm one of the members of the, I'm one of the board members of the York County Peer Support Team. This was a program that was funded by a grant that was awarded to the York County Sheriff's Office three years ago. It's coming to a close. See? You know better. Down. It's actually coming to a close this August after three years in partnership with NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, NAMI Maine. I worked with Deputy Bob Carr, who had recently been in a critical incident. And I admired Bob. I thought he was just a really squared-away, great officer with a great sense of humor despite working the mean streets of Parsons Field. And he called me and just said, I want to do this right and really help officers, after he had been through a critical incident. The money we use has created the York County Peer Support Team, which actually my Sergeant Juliette Angess is a part of. After three years and coming to a close with this grant, we have done, I think, immeasurable numbers of critical incident debriefs. We've connected officers throughout the state with mental health support. Probably the most recent one that I worked with, and this was just out of the blue, happens 24/7 that we get these phone calls through our mental health training, is I did connect an officer in need within, I think it was 12 hours, to the help that that officer needed. And that, to me, is the equivalent of saving a brother and sister in need. This job is unforgiving at times. And if we can all work together as a team and with the right people in partnership with clinicians who are also passionate about first responders, this has been a huge success program for us. And we're hoping to create, instead of the York County Peer Support Team, we will become the Southern Maine Peer Support Team. And we're going to expand into Cumberland County. So, that's the plan. And Otto, of course, is our little therapy dog because he just can't help himself. And that does usually help when he goes to debriefs because you assist all the time, right bud? And then he gets to play and eat pizza, so.
Thank you, Kaitlyn.
Thank you very much, chief.
Question for me or Kaitlyn?
Is that our dog or is it your dog? And do we have to buy him from Kennebunk?
Yes, yes, and yes.
I was going to say, I'm like, who?
I was going to say I can save you on kenneling fees. You can come stay with us whenever you want.
Yeah, Otto has about five babysitters already lined up. He is downstairs, he's been unbelievable. He's such a good, such a good dog. And I just want to stress the mental wellness health work that Officer Sawyer is doing right now. It's played so well into even our chief's role as President of the Maine Chiefs Association. During his speech last fall, he basically said this was going to be his number-one priority. And I think it's huge and it speaks volumes for our department and for, and for having Kaitlyn here. It just fits so well. It just, it just kind of almost fell from the sky in some ways. So, we're really proud to have her and Otto and I think they're going to be a great team for our entire community, so.
There's some competition now in Town Hall?
Yeah, there is. There is. So look out. See, he's an amazing, he, you know, German Shepherds have this almost fearful approach because they are a scary dog sometimes. This dog is not scary in the least. When he gets to meet you, be careful if he comes up to you with that ball though because he will pull your arm out of your socket. So, he is such a strong, strong, strong dog. But he's also such a good dog. And he's been, it's been amazing to see him interact with the officers and interact with staff. I mean, staff just, the problem is coffee breaks only, don't come up all day long because he comes up and everybody goes to Otto. So, it's, he is a popular person in our, in our community. He's already got a personality. So, I'm just so proud we were able to fill a spot that we desperately needed because it's hard when you, when you don't have a full cadre of officers because everybody's picking up a little bit extra. And after time, it wears on you. And now we're back to full staff, which is hugely important. And chief, great job with this. Kaitlyn, we are so happy to have you here. Otto's a plus. He's your plus-one. So, we'll leave it at that. Thank you both.
Chief, I've, the people that Kaitlyn was talking about, I've had a chance to work with them. Bob's critical incident, I was down there. I also worked with Hannah and Tori over to NAMI. And the point being is I've asked them about Kaitlyn. And she gets nothing but rave reviews. So, this is not strictly a public, this is, yeah, we're going to sing her praises. It's, she comes so highly recommended. And we're lucky to have her on board. Her and Tony have been a great addition. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Our code enforcement officer will be glad he's not food motivated. Unlike a certain counselor's pops.
I mean, I wasn't going to call you out, but.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Please excuse the mass exodus when Scott and Kaitlyn's fan club leaves the room, but really appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
And thanks all of you for showing up.
Yes.
All your support, it's fantastic.
So, I would close out the manager's report with a small, small, small item. We are continuing to get requests for the use of the recreation center down at Valhalla. And I have two such requests tonight for you that maybe we could take up under new business. One is for the Yarmouth Fire Department on May 20th or June 3rd. And the other is for a celebration of life for Tom Allen, who recently passed away. Kathy worked at the middle school for years. Brad was a longtime employee at our golf course. He suffered with a lot in the last 10 years or so. So, it's a big thing. Now, my thought process for all of you is to think about this. Perhaps we could basically make these appeals first through the manager. And I would say, if the place is available, if they're willing to do it after 5:00 and if they're willing to pay the $500 fee, then they can, if the room is available, they can go forward. But if they don't want to do that and they don't want to accept my compromised position, they could come to you for the appeal. Because I have a feeling we're going to get a lot more of these and I think it's going to be on a case-by-case. What I would tell you, that it would have to be some type of connection to the town. And I'm not going to allow weddings, I'm not going to do any of that stuff. It's really going to be these type of events that they don't have to come before you. And then if we don't have a council meeting that's in time and they miss a deadline or a date, I just, I would feel awful. These two, I would tell you, every time we've had our public safety banquet, either Yarmouth or Falmouth back us up. So it's kind of a, to me, it's a nice thing to do for them and the room is available. And Tom Allen was a friend as well. And the Allen family was very, very close to many of us in town. Our kids went to school together with a lot of us here. And I just, it's, it was, it was a tough time and they're right up the street from Valhalla as well. So, we'll come back at, under new business, we'll bring that back so you can have some time to think about it.
Just to follow up with that, the Lions Club is also going to come and ask for a...
Well, I think I would put them in that same category. I mean, honestly, the $500 fee is the cleanup portion of it and just basically going toward the building fund for, you know, future, you know, painting, carpeting, all that other stuff that is a wear-and- tear item, you know, and that we have to recognize. So that we contribute something to that. And it's, it's a big room and it's, and you've seen, many of you have seen it. So it's, it's been, well, pretty nicely renovated. So, for me, that's, we can get back to that under new business, Bob, and we can talk about that one as well. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, sorry. Sorry, two more things. First, I did want to report back to you on the CPACE program. Our attorneys are getting something in writing for us, but in their conversations with Efficiency Maine, they did report back that their staff feels that he was correct in that if we took ownership of the property through foreclosure for unpaid municipal taxes, that we would be responsible for repayment of those CPACE monies. So Ben was spot-on when he talked to the ordinance committee. And after that, it was a kind of a thanks but no thanks. And that will get, I hope, in writing so I can present to you. Because I believe some of their staff wanted to present a counterargument. I said, that's going to kill it in its tracks because we have no interest in moving forward. So, they still can apply for Efficiency Maine monies and all that stuff, just like anybody else, but that, that wouldn't occur. And there was a second item, and I'm trying to think, the second item I was bringing back to you. Well, I'll come back to that under new business. But the CPACE was probably... But the CPACE was probably the most important. And to me, I think that pretty much ends it as soon as we get that letter, so.
Thank you. Next item is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone in the audience for public discussion? Legislation and Policy, 23-036. To consider an act on a mass gathering permit for Benny Media's Ultimate Yard Sale to be held June 10th and September 9th at the Cumberland Fairgrounds.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the public? And we'll just note, this is an event that's been hosted before. No incident. Yeah. All right. No public comment? Any questions or comments from the council?
I see that all, the issues have been addressed by the fire, police, rescue, town clerk, and all things look like all the Ts across, and all is adotted. I see nothing wrong with the application.
All those in favor? Thank you. 23-037. To consider an act on a mass gathering permit for the Chickadee Dog Show to be held June 23rd through 25th at the Cumberland Fairgrounds. Similar, this is an event that has been held before. To move to Counselor Vail's comments, kind of all paperwork, the police and rescue will not be needed for the event. Any questions or comments from the public? I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion. Madam Chairman? Wait, let me make the motion. I move to approve the mass gathering permit for the Chickadee Dog Show to be held June 23rd through 25th at the Cumberland Fairgrounds.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. 23-038. To hold a public hearing to consider an act on a medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewal for Evergreen Cannabis Company, Kristen Pettingill, located at 93 Lower Methodist Road. So, this, this request, this entity was originally located at 93 Lower Methodist last year, when they came for their, the new medical marijuana registered caregiver license. It was at a new location within town. This request is under the grandfathering established in that ordinance, and would be moving back to 93 Lower Methodist Road. All that accurate?
One of the licenses, correct.
One of the license, yes, thank you. And I know, I know we're, we're saying it's grandfathered. Can you just remind me, manager, kind of what was the grandfathering language in the ordinance?
Well, because when a, when a business or an entity moves out of a zone that it has been operating in legally, several years ago, maybe 10 years ago, where our ordinances were updated to allow for up to two years for that grandfathering status to continue. Our code officer, Bill Longley, and our town attorney went back and forth. The applicant proved that she did reside there and did operate in that period. They gave correspondence back, they gave information back and forth. And our attorney, our attorney's opinion was that she did meet the grandfathering status. Our attorney's opinion went further to say, while his opinion was asked for, and the code officer's recommendation was that this was a grandfathered use, that the ultimate decision was up to the council. But it was found to be in accordance with the ordinances, and that it would qualify essentially as what we refer to as grandfathered, so.
Mr. Vail?
Am I to understand that the building, the former Board Barn, is no longer going to be used for this marijuana growing operation?
Well, that, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Bill Longley has been working with that person. I don't, their license is not before us yet. So, they, they have to go through that licensing process. This is something different. This was the operation that was on Lower Methodist Road.
Allison.
I guess I confused the Evergreen Cannabis Company is the sign that is out there on Route 100, correct? Or it says Evergreen something?
We're on...
If you would, yeah, you're the applicant. Would you mind going up to the microphone?
Hi, I'm Kristen Pettingill. So, my husband and I own Evergreen Cannabis Company. And the way that the town of Cumberland wrote the medical marijuana ordinance, there was an opportunity for both of us to grow in the same facility. So, I chose to move my caregiver license up to the former Board Barn or 222 Gray Road to join my husband. That is not financially working out. So, I would like to return to my home and have my caregiver license returned back to 93 Lower Methodist Road. What is being done at the Board Barn? That's for the next application. He does plan to continue, well, we've already put in the lap, application to Jen and Bill Longley for his license to continue at 222 Gray Road.
But that's not before you tonight.
Right, exactly. We're separate. Yes. We're two separate caregivers under the same business name. But my, these are neighbors right here, who have already asked me. There's going to be no storefront or patients being, this is just me being able to use my caregiver license to cultivate marijuana under that license. I'm not looking to do anything differently.
And those same restrictions apply as they did out on Route 100.
Exactly.
And, and just one question, maybe for Mr. Manager, or maybe for you, Shirley, is in terms of the license, it's tied to the individual caregiver, not the physical location? So long as that physical location is within an authorized overlay zone area?
Well, not, not in this case. The, it, it's not. But it was grandfathered because of the change. Had it been much longer in time, if it was another six months in the future, the grandfathering most likely would have lapsed.
Okay.
Bill, has this been a, is this location on 93 Method, Lower Methodist, has that been a complaint, an area complaint of odors?
We have had no complaints.
Okay, good.
So, the basis of grandfathering is to, everything to die a slow death. In other words, when a business is created in a grandfathered zone, the idea is at some point that, well, either the, the owner will age out, or, or they'll find something different to do. But the zone with which that grandfathered use lies in reverts to its whatever use. It's a residential use.
Correct.
Residential zone.
Right.
So, the expectation is that it will return to residential use, and, and that your use will, in other words, it's a protection for the surrounding property owners that, yes, you do have a grandfathered use, but there is an expectation at some point that it will not carry through for another generation, so to speak.
It kind of depends. I mean, it can be the error as long as it's following the rules. And as long as it follows the rules, it'll stay there. But you're, you are correct. At some time, had it been another year, for instance, this may have lapsed, and it would have gone back to a residential use. But they, she decided to come back to Lower Methodist Road, and that's well within her rights and well within what was laid out in our ordinance.
Yeah, and that, that's, I think, the, the issue that the attorneys probably were trying to address.
Exactly.
Is this license granted to the individual, Ms. Pettingill? Or is it granted to the location? And if it's granted to the individual, then I would presume that that's grandfathered throughout town.
Right. And so was the use that predated the ordinance.
Right. You see what I'm saying? Because...
But I think previously, you were at 93 Methodist. So, it's, I think the way our ordinance read, it was there, we knew there were locations that were outside of our overlay districts. And we said, those locations could be maintained as long as they registered.
By state law, right.
By state law, they had to register. But they couldn't just start a new pop-up in a new location simply because they had a license.
Yeah, new licenses are prohibited from starting anywhere except where we allow. But those who have licenses are grandfathered. And we, we don't have a say really in that. As long as they become licensed.
And that 93 Lower Methodist was where your business was established prior as well. That's the key.
I, I, perhaps I'm not understanding this. My understanding is that the grandfathering is to her license and to that location. Are you suggesting that her license can be used anyplace in the...
Oh, no, no, no.
That's what, yeah, that's what, that's my concern too. Yeah, that was my concern.
No, Mark, Mark clarified that for me, too.
Well, kind of. Allison clarified it for me.
What a good question that I could then clarify. Go ahead, Ron.
Am I to understand that only Kristen can use this location? No other licensed caregiver?
I think that is correct. I think that would be correct.
That's what I want to clarify, because this is not in the overlay district.
It is not.
That only she can operate on Methodist Road, and nobody else can.
I, I believe the attorney would probably say yes to that.
Okay.
Yep. So, if she moved away, didn't make that, that location, because it's her license.
I guess what I'm concerned with is that another licensed caregiver can come in and grow at her facility, and I don't think that should happen.
I don't think that works that way, Ron.
Not in your ordinance.
All right. That's, the ordinance would trump that, because it would be new.
I don't know one thing about this.
And, and just to the timing question, you mentioned if it was a year later, if it was something, it would have lapsed. Is that in the sense that the original location at 93 Lower Methodist was the initial site listed in the application?
Correct.
Okay. And that application had not lapsed?
Well, there was no application. See, they were licensed under the state rules, and they were allowed to do that legally where they were operating. So, the, when they moved away, the, the clock started ticking. And had it got to two years, and that's when the bell goes off, and no more. You can't come back. So, she did not. She basically moved back to that site and legally did it under our ordinances. And she's good to go.
Any questions or comments from the public? I will entertain a motion.
I'll give you a motion. I move to approve the medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewal for Evergreen Cannabis Company, Kristen Pettingill, located at 93 Lower Methodist Road.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any additional questions or comments from the council? All those in favor? Thank you.
Want to oppose?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Ron. 23-039. To hold a public hearing to consider an act on a medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewal for Creme de la Creme owner, Robert Thibodeau, located at 210 Gray Road.
Madam Chair, we, we find that this license has had no issues, and are recommending approval. I have reached out to Counselor Shirley Sturrock King to talk about the renewal process, because it's redundant and kind of burdensome on the applicants, as well as town staff. What we're recommending, and we will be bringing to the ordinance committee, is a streamlined approach, which would be the licensing requirements, if it's approved by the state, comes to us. We would do an inspection of the facility, so we have eyes on the facility every year by the code officer. And we would also do a report to the town clerk, and which she reports to you, for any violations, or any issues, or any updates. And at that meeting, we would most likely bring the code officer, so he could share those concerns with you. So, with those three things, I think it would streamline the license process tremendously. It's, it's very clunky, the way we looked at it. It's almost like an, a brand-new application, the way it's written in the ordinance. So, Ben, Ben McCall, our attorney, is working on that, and will be bringing that to the ordinance committee. And I think Jen wanted to also try to get the licenses in the same month as well. So, we're gonna probably bring that to you in June. Counselor Sturrock King will, will present that. And hopefully, we'll probably be at the ordinance committee in May sometime to go through the line-by-line stuff, so the entire ordinance committee can see it. But I think we both agreed, Shirley, it just didn't seem like it fit.
To be fair, we created it to be rigorous, because we didn't know what was gonna be coming our way.
Yep, yeah, totally.
And it turned out, our great fears were not realized. And so, we'll take a look at it again. But in the meantime, we have to renew this license.
It's good government, so. It really is, Shirley. And I'm glad we're looking at the renewal. Make it easier.
I know that was your concern at the very beginning.
I think that the rigor, and I'm glad you used that word, is not onerous, because the word "medical" is in the application. If we were reviewing a medical facility, a drugstore, or, or something like that, we would be looking for licenses, and it would be rigor involved. And so, when we say "medical," I believe that there's all the reasons in the world for the rigor, and for us to scrutinize any application that comes before us. We're not pumping gas out there, or selling a used car. We are providing a, presumably, a medical service. So, I don't think any of us should be concerned about, do a lot of scrutiny here and, and having them come before us. So, I'm not sure that, you know, and I appreciate the car, the town manager's appreciation for streamlining it. But again, I'll just say, this is medical marijuana.
Madam, Madam Chair, if, if our town clerk could come up and just talk about some of the specific things, Bob, I don't think we're trying to put anybody through the eye of the needle, or we're trying to basically add a, a level of review that isn't necessary. We're, we're gonna do that. But Jen, you want to talk about some of the things? Because Jen started from square one. She didn't come from the licensing world until she hit this, so she's the expert now.
Very quickly became the expert of this ordinance in the, a new versus a renewal. And what I found when I reviewed the ordinance was that you basically said, okay, we're just gonna start again on this renewal. You're gonna submit everything all over again. And in doing that, is in cumbersome on us and on them. They are doing this to the state. We are still gonna require that. On the renewal process, what we kind of said is, if you're, I'm sorry, I don't have the language in front of me, but if your corporation's changed, if your members change, if you've personally moved somewhere in the last, you know, since the three years last, at your last application, those are the things we want new things for. We're still requiring all those other licensed, proof of licensure, and their cards from the state, their insurance. But we've just kind of simplified it to, these things, we know you gave us the first time around, and those are pages and pages of information. Corporation, certificates of occupancy, those things aren't really gonna change. But we're gonna make sure that if they do change, we've captured that in our renewal language. So, I think that kind of takes, maybe takes away some of that angst of, oh, you know, we're not doing our due diligence.
Yeah, it was a lot of staff review that already was being done at the state. And certificate of insurance was very important to the council. Basically, violations, where there are odors detected, where there are noise issues, where there, you know, kind of, our business operation window that we put in the ordinance, was that being violated? All those things were gonna be checked by the town clerk in, in concert with our code enforcement officer, who typically gets these complaints. And together, they would basically get together and say, okay, all right, this is what I know, and when you go out on your inspection, I want you to check one, two, and three, and then report that back to me. So, they've been very, working very closely together. When we had our act together, we contacted Ben McCall, our town attorney, who had put this together and had worked with the ordinance committee to draft all this. And he was in pretty strong agreement that streamlining, streamlining the process did not impact eyes on the business, or eyes on the renewal. And it was honestly a fair way to go forward. Because that was the other thing we heard from the council last year, is that it's a legal business, we should treat it like we treat other businesses that have business licenses, and we wanted to kind of put everybody on the same plateau. to kind of put everybody on the same plateau. I hope that helps, Bob, because I, we are trying and we're trying to be fair though, too.
I think that, I'm comfortable with where you're heading with the council's heading. I think that there's certainly a personal discomfort with marijuana in general. I think the facts of adult use marijuana and the use of filtering down to our youth, it's an unregulated drug, if you will, at the, you know, at the adult use that is not medical marijuana. So I view this whole thing with concern and I want to make sure that the public is well protected. That's it for me.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion.
Please do.
Oh, go ahead. I had a question. And Shirley, this is probably directed at you, but as I was reading through, this was before my time, so.
Hey, Tig, you might want to bring your mic down.
Sorry about that, okay. As I was reading through the packet, I just, and Bill, you touched on this very briefly, but Shirley, I was wondering if you would be so kind just to educate me very briefly on the odor parameters? How does that work? Because is it, does it all have to be contained into the building itself?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, you still? The odor? There's mention in the packet in Bill Longley's memo about not being able to detect the odor. And so I was just curious if you could very briefly enlighten me as to what the specifics are of that? Does it have to be contained within the building or what does that look like?
It has to be contained in the building. This whole marijuana ordinance started when people across the street from our very establishment here were growing out in their yard and field and the neighbors just kept getting whiffs of it. So yes, the odors all have to be contained within the building.
Within the building, thank you. I was, it was a little confusing reading it for the first time, so thanks.
If I recall, there's also a requirement, I mean, in terms of code enforcement, that there's pretty significant ventilation and filtration systems put in place. So, I mean, obviously air's got to get out at some point, right? And so it's like, what does that run through? And so it doesn't seem like in this application, they were able to detect that specifically coming from this location. So he did not find any issues and would recommend the renewal of the license, so.
Unlike when you're driving down the highway and you get passed by a car where you get that awful smell and you know right away. So are you ready?
Go for it.
Okay. I move to approve the medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewal for Creme de la Creme owner Robert Thibodeau located at 210 Gray Road.
I'll second that.
I will say it's open for public discussion. Anyone from the public? Any additional questions or comments?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, okay. All those in favor? And one abstention. 23-040 to appoint members to vacant, vacant board and committee seats. Do we? Mr. Pat?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion if you'd like.
Please.
I move to appoint Terry Maloney Kelly to the Shellfish Conservation Commission, Robert Knapp to the Board of Sewer Appeals, and Bert Kendall to the Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board. Mark, Shirley, and I myself have gone over this and that is what we came up with. Shirley, thank you for carrying most of the weight.
Well, I just want to thank all the people. We had six applicants for library advisory board. And so when we got done, luckily I had their, I forgot to bring those applications back, but I had all their email addresses. So I sent them all an email and asked them to consider joining the Friends or knowing that we have some fundraising in our future for our library, the more people, the merrier. So, and this candidate has some experience with fundraising, so that was really when it came down to push comes to shove. That was a bonus.
I'll have a motion, yep.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion.
Any questions or comments from the public? All those in favor? Thank you. 23-041 to set a public hearing date of May 8th to consider an act on the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 municipal budget.
Second.
You going to make a motion?
I think Ronnie made that.
Oh, did you?
No.
No. You just got excited.
I heard you mumbling.
So moved.
Second.
Noted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next is new business. As I mentioned and as you just heard, we are coming to the end of kind of our workshop season for budget. We do have one remaining workshop, which will be this Saturday, April 29th, starting at 8:00 a.m. in council chambers. We will run until completion. As we just noted, we now have our public hearing set for May 8th. I will also just do my end, well, bookend it, but May 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 in the council chambers is the new residents orientation. And again, residents that have kind of moved to town in the last five years are all welcome. I know I like popping in for, I don't know, the food, but it's a, it's a good group. Mr. Manager, do you want to bring back your new business consideration?
Yeah, we have potentially three requests for the use of Valhalla. As you know, we're in, we call it the shoulder season, the kind of the no-fly zone, whatever you want to call it. But the hard time of year for us is May till Labor Day because of the use of the golf course. So parking is at a premium and that's why we didn't want to create other headaches down the road. So we ask that during that season, if somebody does request it and the room is available, that they appeal that denial to the council. But as I shared in the beginning of the meeting, that it just seemed like it's going to happen a lot. So if we start at, the use would be approved after 5:00 p.m. if the room were available and $500 minimum and it has to be some type of connection to Cumberland. So I'm just going to say point-blank weddings are going to be denied right out of the gate because it's just too difficult. It just really is. If they want to go to you, then they can, you guys can say sure. So it's up to you. But for me, I think that's the easiest and the $500 fee would be automatic. And if they weren't amenable to those conditions, they could also come to you. The hard time I'm going to have honestly is the requests from the Lions Club and that's because of the things they do for our community. I mean, they are almost an extension of the town. They do so much for so many people in this community and so many things that we never hear about here that happen. And sometimes I hear through Bob about, you know, somebody going over and building a ramp or helping with a set of stairs or helping with a home project that we never see. Those are the, those are the things that I hear the most of and also what they do for the food pantry. I mean, they dropped off 85 frozen apple pies this year and 85 boxes of fruit this year that, you know, we never saw a dime for. They paid for it. They did all the fundraising and they do a lot more than we'll ever know. So that one was a tough one for me. I know it's during the golf season. Their request, I think, is sometime in June, Bob, is my recollection. And if it doesn't conflict with a golf outing, personally, I'd like to just say, you guys clean up the room and I know they'll do a good job with that. There's usually never any issue and we'll call it good because I just don't see them ever changing. They're always going to be there for us. So that's my, that would be my recommendation, you know, let the two, the first two go at the fee that we talked about. If they don't want to pay that fee, they can come to you and present their case and the Lions Club permit and just waive the fee, so.
All in favor of it?
I agree with you, Bill. I, you know, when, I went along with the recommendations from Recreation on the facility use, the facility use policy that they presented with us. But I did, it wasn't without a little heartburn. If, you know, if we want to keep our small-town feel, we need to have some flexibility in these kinds of situations. The Lions Club donate, over the years have donated or gifted hundreds of thousands of dollars to students and scholarships.
I totally forgot about that, yeah.
You know, and they're just, they're, they're always there, always willing to lend a hand, very inclusive in their organization. I remember when it was all old men. Now it's not just old men.
Young men, too.
It used to be, she said, Bob.
But I remember when it used to be. I remember, you know, some of the first women that were on in the Lions Club. But in any event, I do think that there needs to be some flexibility. I think, you know, letting Yarmouth use it, when we've had public safety banquets, Yarmouth and Falmouth have been on call for us so that our public safety people can enjoy their one night of the year when we recognize their accomplishments. So I do think there needs to be some flexibility in these situations.
I think this is great. I mean, it's a resource that we are really excited to provide to the community and to Shirley's point, I mean, Yarmouth Fire Department, a celebration of life, and the Lions Club. I mean, I don't think that we can do better than that.
Yep.
Well said.
All right, by consensus, I'll take that as an okay and we'll go with the modified appeal policy.
We'll codify that down the road.
That's next.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. You want to start tonight, Shirley?
Yes, I'm starting. Well, I just want to extend my condolences to the Allen family. I hadn't realized Tom had passed away and I know Kathy well, having worked with her at the middle school for years and had Lindsay and Brad both as students. And Lindsay actually worked several years as my son's speech pathologist. So I know it's been a long road. Tom's been ill for a while and I hope their memories bring them some peace and comfort. I wanted to, I wanted to add, I already added, that I appreciate the flexibility on the use of Valhalla. I think little things like that help us stay small-town feeling. I've been losing that feeling a little bit, so any little thing like this helps bring that back for me. As well as, I got a chuckle. I was talking with Terry Maloney Kelly last week and I had not realized that her dad was on the Shellfish Conservation Commission. And so she's like a legacy board member of the Shellfish Conservation Commission and that just kind of made me chuckle. And that's all I have.
Just two things. One, reminder, we're going to hit it next meeting as well. Bulky trash day is coming up, so after May, start getting your stuff out. And the other thing, I just want to say how much I enjoyed the presentations earlier tonight and I'm glad that Nina came to personally thank Scott. That was really emotional and, but Bill is wonderful and we've got some really good people here.
Amazing department.
It really is. It really is. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update that the senior property tax bill that we've all kind of been working on with Representative Moriarty, we testified last week in Augusta, I think that was last week or the week before. Yeah, two weeks ago in Augusta and it's set for a workshop on Thursday. So I don't think we're going to have an ability to submit testimony or anything to that effect. It's very similar to one of the workshops that we may have on Finance Committee or Ordnance Committee where the public's invited to sit in. But it's one of many bills that's going to be taken up as part of the kind of larger package to go after LD 290 in terms of modifications or how that might be tweaked and changed. And then on a, on a personal note, I just want to say that, you know, it was about a month ago, we had our meeting and we talked about affordable housing and these other issues. And it's something that's been weighing on my heart a lot lately in the sense that I would like to apologize to some folks in the community. I think during the debates, talking about affordable housing, talking about the new school, some of my own personal opinions on it came out, which is, there's nothing wrong with that. But I'm concerned that I made folks feel that their vote was not valid in some way. And so I just would like to apologize to folks if folks feel like I wasn't listening or taking things personally. I mean, my kids go to this school. I have my son who's in a modular right now. It was a 14-hour day for me personally before we even started those meetings. And so, but regardless of that, I want folks to feel included. I want folks to feel like we're listening and I want folks to continue to come back to raise their concerns about either the school issue, which obviously is not controlled by the council, but housing and the growth of the community. Just want to know that we're listening and my apologies if I made anyone feel uncomfortable and just want to get that out there. So that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Van?
I too was at Tom Allen's funeral or memorial service out at Yarmouth there last week. Things have a way of going full circle. I also last Saturday had the opportunity to side a Lions Club member garage who was recovering from cancer and a good group of people with no talent at all and certainly very little skill sets, we were able to side a whole garage. And it was, you know, it was a good day. A little frustrating at times, but it was, you know, it's nice to see a community come together and accomplish something. I too have thought about what we have said here in public and how that plays out. And I'm also in tune with how other communities do that also. And I'll back up to the little celebration we had with the fire department and the police department there a couple of weeks ago. And I had the opportunity, my wife and I, to not sit with fellow council members because you guys didn't save me a place.
I think you brought that up before. No, no?
Hey, Bob, I got there after they got the table, so.
But anyways, we sat with a group of people who worked for the community, who did not live in our community. And, you know, and I thought to myself, all right, so we are on the right track because that's what we are working to do is to provide housing, affordable housing. Hopefully some of that housing is going to be workforce housing that will be suitable for people who work in our community to buy something or rent someplace and live with us and amongst us. And I think the diversity is so important for, not only for me, but for our children, our grandchildren. And, you know, if I looked at what happened over at Falmouth the other night, I just know that we, this council, we certainly deserve criticism now and again, but we are all on the right track and we are striving to do something that's visionary and is going to make this community a better place.
It's hard to top that, but I will try with some logistical updates. The Coastal Waters Commission, we met on April 18th to make some final adjustments to the mooring allocations and some of the ordinance, which will be making its way to the ordinance committee at some point soon. And happy to chime in if there are any questions about that language, but it should be pretty clear, I think. And then I hope everyone is very excited for May 13th. As a reminder, you have all committed to meet at, on the Greeley side at 7:30 a.m. on a Saturday for a walk-through, don't look at me like that, Mike, with the forestry subcommittee to look at the invasives and kind of the larger invasive management plan. Paul Lervy is booked for that as well, so us and Lands and Conservation, that particular subcommittee, it should be great to see the bittersweet and the buckthorn and all of those pests in action. And then just one other thought, we kind of talked about this a couple of months ago. Following, I'm not sure what shooting it was, there are so many, it can be hard to keep up. But in light of, you know, what happened, the South Portland incident, the Bowden incident, I don't know at some point if it might be, if people might be interested revisiting the possibility of some kind of active shooter or training program, you know, available to people in the community. Just a thought to keep on our radar. That's it for me.
I'd like to donate my $20 to the food pantry and a couple of other things. Last Monday, I was called to 295 after this huge incident to tow three vehicles. Two of them I towed were the victims of the incident and an hour later, I was called back to haul the one that the shooter was in. And the police presence in this community was unbelievable in a very short amount of time. I mean, we all think that we live in a safe community. It was phenomenal to see what unfolded down there, that you never saw so many police in one area.
It was phenomenal to see what unfolded down there, that you never saw so many police in one area. My wife was on two ninety-five when this took place, headed to Topsy. And she called me up and she said, I'm northbound on the interstate and southbound is closed. She said, what is going on? She said, I've never seen so many police. And I had no idea what had unfolded until a few minutes after that. But our new officer was instrumental in what took place down there with our dog. And I want everybody to know that. I mean, it was no, no small feat. I mean, what took place down there was heroic on a lot of parts. I mean, it could have been much, much more tragic than what was. And it was just kudos to our police department, Falmouth, Yarmouth, the state police and all that were involved. It was really a well jo, a good job well done. And one last thing, my wife swore me to secrecy, but Sunday was my wife's birthday and tomorrow is Linda Shane's birthday. And I am not supposed to give their age up.
What?
Happy birthday, Linda. Because they're both born the same year.
Twenty-five.
There we go.
And that's all I have.
Wonderful.
My one item, and this is like where you know I'm losing it. Totally thought I drafted this email and hit send to Bill and Whitney. So I'm just going to throw this out there. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so I'd love to bring back kind of some of our mental health work and resources that we had been publishing kind of through, what was that, twenty twenty-two? Conveniently was vacationing with Mr. Brown last week. And so I will follow up Whitney, but he said he'd be more than happy to like, kind of look at some of those resources and make sure like what's most current still and if there's anything new or different. But would love to, kind of in our social media, and cry or just bring back, kind of making that a little bit bigger and prominent in the month of May. And maybe we can do something with our new officer if she wanted to highlight something more specific to.
She would love it.
Yeah. Thank you. That was my only item, so thank you. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.